To the board and the board will move approval for the required resolutions adopting the tentative fiscal year 2020 rate and annual budget in that order. Staff will now provide a brief presentation on the tentative fiscal year 2020 annual budget. Cynthia Stiglitz.
Good afternoon, directors. For the record, Cindy Stiglitz, interim CFO for Heart. So today I'd like to present for your consideration the FY20 tentative Heart operating and capital budgets. I'll give you an overview of the combined budgets, revenues and expenses, the FY20 funded capital projects and then next steps.
Cindy, could you move the mic a little closer?
Yes.
Thank you.
So historically, Heart has used a traditional budget-based planning approach in developing its annual budget, essentially using last year's budget as a basis for planning next year's activities. In FY20, we're shifting to an outcome-based budget methodology and basically using the end in mind, letting our mission goals and objectives drive why and how the funds are being spent. So to begin the journey in the coming year, we will focus on success outcomes in the following four key areas: enhancing the customer experience and increasing satisfaction, sustaining strong financial performance, engaging and developing our employees, and delivering value to the community. You'll hear more about these goals in Mr. Limer's CEO report on our new performance scorecard. The tentative FY20 operating budget is $83,491,758, which is 4.56 million dollars or about 6% greater than FY19. Because of the pending litigation, the FY20 budget does not include sales tax revenue, so our increase is primarily driven by our increase in avalorum revenues. The tentative capital budget is $37,961,026, which is $5.3 million or 16% greater than the FY19 budget, and again, does not include sales tax. Unlike operating budgets, capital budgets can roll from year to year depending upon the completion of the projects, so while the budget is increasing, some of the projects and revenues are carried over from FY19. New projects represent about 30% or $11 million of this budget and include state of good repair and safety initiatives. The total tentative operating capital budget is a combined total of $121,452,784 and is approximately $10 million or 9% greater than FY19. So this is a pictorial of our operating and capital revenues and the percent that they represent within the total budget. Avalorum and fares represent about half of our combined budgets, but as you'll see later, those two funding sources represent about three-quarters of our operating budget and only about 1% of our capital budget. As far as federal grants, approximately one-third of our total federal funding supports our operating budget and two-thirds support our capital budget. As far as state grants, 40% of the allocation supports our operating budget and 60% supports our capital budget. So this chart depicts the total operating and capital budgets combined and how the expenses are allocated among modes and projects. The percentages are fairly consistent from year to year. So in terms of operating revenue drivers for FY20, without the sales tax, again, we're only budgeting a 6% increase in our overall revenues and we're still planning to maintain our current service levels. Ridership is estimated to be steady to FY19, so therefore, our customer fares will also be held flat to FY19 projected levels. In July, the board adopted a mileage rate of .5 mils. There was approximately a 9% increase in property values this year, which will yield about $4 million in our avalorum tax revenues over FY19. We'll realize approximately $3.3 million decrease in state and local funding. This is primarily due to several FDOT grants that were supporting the 275 LX that have been completely spent down in FY19, and the local funding we received from the county in FY18 and 19 that supported the routes that were added back after Mission Max was not automatically renewed. Our mitigating strategy here is to, so as not to affect service, is to defer our contribution into our reserves until we know the fate of the sales tax. Essentially, we're borrowing from ourselves in order to maintain the service levels until we know what our ability will be to continue those routes. Last week, Mr. Limer went before the B.O.C.C., Hillsborough County Commission, and they did vote to restore that funding should the sales tax not be upheld. So these are the operating revenues that are broken down by revenue sources and the percentage that they are in our budget that they represent. Again, avalorum is about 60% of our overall revenues in our operating budget and it represents about 90% of the total increase in our revenues in FY20. Farebox recovery continues to be 15%, which has been fairly consistent since FY17, and again, we're not anticipating any fare revenue increases. And for the second year, we are offering free fares based on an FDOT grant for $890,000 a year for the streetcar. Federal funding is our third-largest revenue source. The annual 5307 formula funding is approximately $13.5 million each year. In recent years, we've needed to use 90% of that formula funding in operating to offset maintenance expenses and assist with the cost of paratransit services. In FY20, we'll again be using $12.5 million of our anticipated award or 93% of that funding in operating. And finally, as I mentioned, we're offsetting the loss in revenues from state and local contributions by not budgeting to contribute to reserves. Although we're not budgeting to put money into reserves, the good thing is we're also not taking from reserves to balance the budget. So without being able to count on sales tax, our revenues only increased 6%, so therefore, we need to budget our expenses within that 6% increase. So the largest driver of our expenses are staffing at approximately 70% of the budget. This doesn't really vary much from year to year. We're a service-oriented agency. 85% of our workforce are the operators, mechanics, supervisors, the drivers, and the customer service staff that keep our service on the road. One of the key areas that operations will be looking to address in FY20 is how we can drive down operator and mechanic overtime. In FY19, we're annualizing to spend close to $4.7 million in overtime, which represents about 12% of our salaries and wages. We have a new HR director who'll be looking at recruitment and retention initiatives, and also, we have an internal workforce task force that will help drive those initiatives as well. We're looking at hiring standards to increase our applicant pool, especially as we look to expand services in the future. Another area of staffing is the healthcare claims. That's consistently represented at about 13% of our personnel services, and again, we are anticipating an increase of approximately 10% or $750,000 in FY20. So there's a few areas in the budget that we actually warranted and increased investment, notably technology, security and bus parts. We've specifically increased our security budget by 50% so that we can offer Level 5 security, which is armed guard services at our transit centers and throughout the footprint. And of course, due to an aging fleet that's sorely behind on being replaced, we have an increase in bus parts until we have the ability to purchase new buses with our sales tax revenue. So this is a reflection of our expenses broken down by cost category, knowing that we had to find savings throughout the budget in order to keep service levels constant. Staff did an excellent job of reallocating budgets and getting down to whether or not expenses were actually mission-critical. As you can see, again, between salaries, fringes, healthcare, that's 70% of our budget. I mentioned overtime in the previous slide and wanted to point out that approximately $3.3 million of that category is overtime, which is actually a 30% reduction in what we are annualizing to spend. When you look in the difference column, you see a lot of red, which means that we've looked for cost savings in those categories. The operational contracts category, which include the expenses that I've already mentioned, IT, security, but also the downtown service that you approved to be funded through March of 2020, facility and bus stop maintenance and paratransit customer choice program. And then in the last category, the other administrative, the tax collector, property praiser fees are about $1 million or 50% of that category. So as far as our capital budget in FY20, we have a $5.3 million increase over FY19. The primary driver of that increase is an FDOT funding that increased by approximately $6 million in FY20. The two projects being funded by that increase are the HM building renovation, which FDOT allocated $3.5 million for, as well as the regional revenue fare collection project that are known as Bomingo, which increased by $2.5 million in FY20. FTA formula funding is actually comprised of three different grant programs that we've gotten every year. The 5307 urbanized area funding, which I mentioned before, we allocate about 10% or $1.3 million to capital every year. The 5339 bus and bus facilities, which is approximately $1.7 million, and the 5337 state of good repair, which supports the streetcar and is approximately $700,000 a year. So in FY20, what you see is an aggregate of all of those three funding sources, both those that are anticipated in FY20 and funding that has yet to be fully expensed and carried over from previous years. FTA discretionary funding is made up of three awards. The longest outstanding is an earmark we received in FY13 for the HM building, which is approximately $3.7 million remaining. $1 million for an emergency relief grant that we got for stormwater improvements after Hurricane Irma, and the remaining $800,000 was just awarded under a discretionary TOD grant for the transit-oriented development study that's also in our FY20 budget. Then the last category of federal funding is the FHA transfer funding, known as the Surface Transportation Block Grant. In FY17 and 18, we received a total of $14.5 million for bus replacements. In FY19, we received $6.1 million for our CAD, ABL, ITS replacement and streetcar infrastructure upgrades. And in FY20, we'll receive $4 million for paratransit van replacements and a new CNG compressor. All of these projects are also listed to the right. Local funding in the capital budget represents mobility fees, sometimes called impact fees that come from the city and the county. Those funds have to be used in certain zones, so what you see budgeted there is based on the projects that are anticipated in each of those zones. In the project listed to the right, you'll see that the bus stop and shelters program is funded by mobility fees to the amount of about 60%. Then other projects I'd like to point out address our state of good repair needs. Back in October, we presented to you the Transit Asset Management Plan that demonstrated a $43 million backlog in our state of good repair. The $43 million backlog included rolling stock, infrastructure and equipment. So with the limited funding that we had this year, we chose to replace the 44 paratransit and flex vehicles, 16 support vehicles and overhaul four of our streetcars. As far as our safety efforts addressed in this budget, the driver safety barriers are intended to be completed in the first quarter of FY20, and we'll be continuing to install surveillance on our vehicles as well as facilities during the year. So for our next steps, after your approval today of the tentative mileage and budget, we will have a final public hearing on September 23rd for final adoption of the mileage and budget. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the directors? Appearing to be none. Staff will now introduce the tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate and annual budget overview.
This is the first required public hearing of the tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate and annual budget as indicated by the term notices previously mailed to all taxpayers in Hillsborough County, City of Tampa and City of Temple Terrace. The tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate of .5 mils is the same as the adopted fiscal year 2020 mileage rate of .5 mils. The tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate is 6.66% more than the rollback rate of .4688 mils. The tentative fiscal year 2020 annual budget is $121,452,784, which represents an increase of 8.9% from the adopted fiscal year 2019 annual budget. The tentative fiscal 2020 annual budget consists of the following components: the tentative operating budget, $83,491,758; the total tentative capital budget, $37,961,026; for a total annual tentative budget of $121,452,784. The tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate and the annual budget were subjects of the board and committee meetings conducted June through August 2019. The tentative fiscal year 2020 not-to-exceed mileage rate was set at the July 15, 2019 board meeting and provided a property praiser on July 17, 2019 in conformance with state law.
Thank you. Are there any questions from staff before we proceed? Appearing to be none. I will now take public comment regarding the tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate and annual budget. For those who wish to speak, I ask you please limit your comments to three minutes. We have nine people who have asked to speak. First one is Phil Compton.
Good evening. It's great to be with you. Thanks for holding this hearing. I'm Phil Compton. I live at 1430 East Park Circle here in Tampa, and I am senior organizing representative for Sierra Club's Clean Transportation For All campaign. We're very happy that while this budget is not what perhaps you deserve and not what you'll have in the near future, we're very happy that in the near future that you will be able to dramatically expand your budget, hopefully this year, also with the Volkswagen settlement. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Drive Electric Florida organization with our utilities like TECO, and we know that the state is finally moving forward to disperse those funds where 70% is to be allocated for buses. But the question is, what kind of buses? Will you buy more of the CNG buses that you've had the last few years, or will you instead go to all-electric buses as cities all over America? Los Angeles, Chicago, New York, Tallahassee? Tallahassee and those cities will all be 100% electric by 2035. That means every bus they buy going forward will be electric. Really, now is the time to start making the move to these clean, quiet, electric transit buses that your customers deserve. You can reduce noise and air pollution as you increase service in our neighborhoods. They save lives, kids with asthma, seniors with COPD, and they save money. Electric buses are now known to cost less to own and operate than anything else. So what's wrong with the CNG buses that Heart's been buying? After all, the buses say that they run on clean American natural gas, which means they run on what you might really call fracked gas. And a lot of people are against TECO burning fracked gas in Hillsborough County. Well, you should be just as concerned about burning more fracked gas in our streets with the buses. We have the worst smog in Florida. You probably know that, right? And the main cause is nitrogen oxide from tailpipes. Your tailpipe, my tailpipe, everybody's. CNG buses do cut the emissions of nitrogen oxide half. Electric buses eliminated completely. And CNG buses emit just as much carbon dioxide as diesel buses. Now, in a county with 158 miles of shoreline, three rivers, thousands of waterfront residents, I'm one of them, we need to eliminate carbon emissions as soon as possible, as much as possible. And if we had all-new CNG buses or mostly CNG buses that would run into the 2030s, that would represent a massive missed opportunity to do that. And then there's methane. It's a far more dangerous contributor to climate change than carbon. Fracked gas, CNG buses emit far more methane than diesel buses. Electric buses, there's none. These CNG buses now cost, on average, maybe your price is a little different, 83 cents a mile as they only get 2.8 miles per gallon. Electric buses get the equivalent of 25.3 miles per gallon, and that costs about 21 cents a mile. Why should we spend four times as much on fuel for this kind of bus as opposed to that kind of bus? We ask you to please...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please start planning to switch to all-electric buses. Thank you.
Next on the list is David Sinclair.
My name is David Sinclair. I live at 8434 Pebble Circle in Tampa, Florida, 33615. I'm a member of LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens. I'm their state chair for climate and environmental issues. I'd like to share with you some statistics, though briefly but significant, and to follow on from Mr. Compton has said, these are most related to the importance of electric buses. A typical diesel bus emits 229,167 pounds of greenhouse gases annually, while a CNG bus, or to be straightforward, a fracked gas-running bus emits similarly 219,083 pounds per year. Electric buses, zero. If hard work to buy, say, 250 zero-emission electric buses instead of 250 CNG buses, you'd eliminate 49 million pounds per year of CO2 gases. A switch to zero-emission buses with no tailpipe pollution presents a critical opportunity to cut pollution, reduce oil dependence, and make the world a better place. Methane is an incredibly potent type of greenhouse gas. A fracked gas or CNG, if you prefer, bus emits an incredible 22,917 pounds of methane per year. That's 194 times more than a diesel bus. Again, electric buses, zero methane. I speak to you from my heart. I speak to you representing members of LULAC. We need to care for our environment. We need to stand up for this opportunity to get involved and behind the use of electric buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Kremrich.
My name is Tom Kremrich. I live at 8709 Seahawk Lane here in Tampa, near Temple Terrace, and I am a Heart customer. I don't own a car. I bike and bus. That's how I got here today. So I'm very familiar with the whole thing of what's happening, especially about a year and a half ago when they took away my route and the nearest bus stop was three miles away. So at that time, I was super busy, could not get involved, but other people did, and we got the route back. It stops right at my driveway. But I'm here as a Sierra Club member, as a Heart bus patron, as an environmentalist, as a person who is also, you know, respectful of your concerns about economics, and to let you know, as these two previous people have said, it's cheaper to go all-electric than it is even compressed natural gas. So even if you don't buy into the environmental thing, economically, it's cheaper, and we've got years of data to back all this up. Tallahassee has been using electric buses for seven years. There are cities all around the country, including St. Petersburg, who have committed to go ready for 100, 100% sustainability by 2050. Part of that plan is to have their buses be electric buses. In the Hillsborough County, I don't know if it's just the county or the whole Tampa Bay area, but as been mentioned before, we have the worst air pollution in the whole state of Florida. Now, you don't look out there and see the smog, but if you've got asthma, you know what I'm talking about. And so it's just, it's economically smart, it's environmentally smart, it just makes all the sense in the world to go electric buses. And we've got the data to back all this stuff up. So thank you for your time. And also, I'd like everybody in the audience who would like to see Heart switch to electric buses to stand up. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Barb Tepeke.
Hello, my name is Barb Tepeke. As a retired public school teacher, I remember having bus duty at the end of the day. Just imagine two to 300 kids hot and tired, the heat bouncing off the cement where they sit and wait. Then imagine smelling the fumes coming from the diesel buses lined up waiting for 10 to 15 minutes. I know this isn't a school board meeting, but the bus fumes are the same all over the county. Please buy electric buses so no one in the county will have to breathe bus fumes again. Please buy electric buses for the many cost savings on maintenance and fuel over the life of the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michael Newitt.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Newitt. I represent a lot of humanity, probably, or we might want to call them environmental different people, groups. And I look at this budget, first, I live at 511 Calder Park Road in Sefner. We've never seen a bus. We have to go to Brandon to see a bus. And I have a regular house with a regular property. I pay $4,500 a year in taxes, and there are no buses in my area. And I see a budget here of $121 million. A lot of people sacrifice to pay this money, and we don't have any buses. And in a lot of areas of the county, especially down south and the outside areas, they don't have buses at all. It's kind of a shame. But I see this budget, and I see all these capital expenses on this list here, and I see a lot of capital expenses that look to me like they're recurring expenses: fixing bus stops, fixing shelters, 44 new transit coaches, 16 new personnel buses or cars or whatever they are. I don't quite understand this budget. It doesn't really delineate between what's a one-time expense or what I would consider to be a capital expense, and many, many repetitive kind of expenses that I think should be broken out so people could see what it really costs to operate this system. And as far as buying all these different-sized vehicles, there are other county groups like the sheriff and people that are looking at different kinds of vehicles, electric vehicles and stuff, because like the mayor here, who we all appreciate, we're trying to live through this. I was on the healthcare board. I know what healthcare costs, and I know what's happening to the air quality in Tampa Bay. It's below federal standards almost every day. And I think if we're the smart, intelligent, most wonderful leadership that's available here can't get to buying electric and sustainable vehicle-type buses when we have all this money that everybody's paying 1% sales tax to be able to provide, I think it's really a shame. So I would appreciate if everybody would try to look forward a little bit and get on the sustainable side of the street with the mayor and a lot of people on this board, who I know their hearts are right there, with a lot of my friends who are behind me, who some of which rode their bikes to get here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Neil Hargis.
My name is Neil Hargis. I'm with the Palmetto Beach Community Association, serving on the Board of Directors. My comments are actually not meant for the budget hearing. They are meant for the Board of Directors meeting following after, so with your permission, I'd like to reserve the right to speak for the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Paul Fosse. If I mispronounce anybody's name, I do apologize. Mine gets mispronounced always, though. I know how it feels. I know how it feels.
Hello. My name is Paul Fosse, and I guess I know you from TCMS, TCMS days. I live in Citrus Park, which is 5906 Jefferson Park Drive. I have a little different perspective on electric buses. I am for them, but probably for a little different reasons than other people. I'm a Republican background, but I'm a longtime electric vehicle owner. I had a Nissan Leaf for seven years. I've had a Tesla for one year. And for the last year, I've been writing for the Clean Technica blog and written 95 articles, mostly on EVs and Tesla. So although I support what they said about global warming and pollution, I want to focus on some things that are pro-EV that they didn't talk about. They did talk a little bit about that they're quieter, and they reduce vibration, but I wanted to talk technically, why is it? It's because CNG or diesel buses, they take the fuel, and they only turn about 20% of that fuel into motion, which is what you want with Hart, is you want to get people places. A lot of it goes into heat, or vibration, or sound. An electric motor, electric motors tend to be about 80 to 90% efficient. So that's why they're quieter. When they're quieter, it's nice for the riders, it's nicer for the community in general, and it's also nicer for the drivers. You have less driver fatigue, and possibly even, you know, lower health costs for them. I wanted to talk about a second advantage of EVs, and that is, when a regular bus puts on their brakes, what do they do? They take that forward motion, and they put those brake pads together, and they turn that forward motion into heat, both burning up their brake pads and turning that into heat. What does an EV do? It runs its electric motors in reverse, turning that forward motion, not 100% efficient, but back into the batteries. What does this mean? It means that you want to use EVs first on routes that are lower speed and have lots of stops, because that's where you'll get the most regenerative braking benefit. I do want to mention a couple of short disadvantages of EVs. They do cost more, but the fuel savings, the maintenance savings, and even their extended life counteract that. You do have to worry about charger infrastructure, and you do have to worry about which manufacturer. It is a new area. Some manufacturers, BYD, for example, has had some communities where they have not delivered the range they have promised. So you do have to check out, you know, do your due diligence to buy the right brand. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Topher Morrison.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Topher Morrison. I live at 1211 East Kennedy Boulevard, and I just want to thank you for holding this hearing. I got to tell you, I'm optimistic. I'm excited. I look here, and I see the new leadership. I will tell you, Mayor Castor, I don't like to lose. If I'm going to lose, I'm honored to lose to you. I've been very happy with the changes I've been seeing, especially you getting a dog. I like that. Excited to see the new leadership with the county commissioners here as well. I want to encourage you guys to do the right thing. It's not the easy thing. It may not even be the cheapest thing, but I do want to urge you to get electrical vehicles. I think at the end, one of the biggest arguments is going to be, can we get the same amount of vehicles for the same price? And the answer to that question is going to be no. You're going to spend more per unit, and that might mean that you actually get less vehicles for the same amount of money in the beginning. And I'd like to just encourage you to make that decision anyway. I mean, I would love to see increased routes. I would love to see increased frequency, but we're going to have to make some sacrifices somewhere. And I think, for me, it's just this, I think we've been living without for so long because of so many budget cuts. We're kind of used to it now at this point in time. We'll be grateful for anything we get. So if we get less buses, but they're cleaner and they're more efficient, I think that's better for the environment. I think it's better for us. With Mr. Limer's leadership, he'll figure a way to make a penny stretch to a dollar. I'm confident of that. So I just want to encourage you guys to do the right thing, get those electric vehicles. It may not be easy. It may not be simplest. It may not be the most predictable, but I think it'll really show this city that our leadership is ready to step up, create some innovative solutions to the challenges that we have. And we'll eventually get the buses to the quantity that we level, but let's get the quality that we want right now. It also helps your initiative. I know you signed on for the commitment to 100, 100% renewable energy. We cannot get there with diesel engines. It's just not going to happen. So I just want to encourage you guys. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your participation. And please remember to get electric vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last on the list then is Sharon Seiden.
You said it fine. Good evening. Thank you for holding this hearing. I have a question for you. How many took a bus today and waited in the hot sun and maybe had an umbrella with you? Anyone? No, I doubt it. Therefore, I say to you, I go past these benches, people are sitting there, it is hot. I understand. I totally understand about the expense, the budget, but I have a question, and I came in at the end. Who are you marketing to? Who are you advertising to? You're the only bus company in town. We don't even have a railroad to go on, which would be cost-effective. If you hear my voice, you know I'm from New York. So we can hop on a bus, we could go in a subway, we can go on the Long Island Railroad, but we can't do any of those things here. And we wait for a bus. Sometimes it comes. When I go on an appointment, I see people sitting there for an hour. Yes, electric buses are very important, and we should have it, but you have to gradually put it in, and you have to replace the buses you have, and you keep on going. It can be done if you want to have it done. You want to look at your children, your grandchildren, and say, I did this for the environment. I don't have to go through all the statistics. You know why electric buses are better. And you are sitting here, you're going to make a decision, make a right decision for the community. You are in a critical, critical position in the community. So do something right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That appears to be anybody else wishing to address this issue? Appearing to be none. I'll open the floor to board discussions, and after our recommended changes to the tentative mileage rate or budgets, ask to move approval for any changes. Okay. We have a move to approve in a second. Any other comments for discussion? Appearing to be none. All of those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Nay, sign? Thank you. The motion passes. Public comment is now closed, and we will now take a formal vote on the tentative, excuse me, a tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate and annual budget. The resolutions shall now be read. Cynthia?
Yes. Resolution R. 2019-9-39, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the tentative levying of abomorum taxes, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate of .5 mils, and providing part effective date.
So moved that. Second.
Okay. State statutes require we approve the tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate before we approve the tentative fiscal year annual budget accordingly. We have a resolution, and we have a motion. Can we have a motion in a second? Any... Okay.
You had the motion.
I made it.
Okay. Mr. Kanaak made the motion, and Commissioner Oberman seconded it. Any further discussion? Appearing to be none. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Resolution R. 2019-9-40, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2020 annual budget of $121,452,784, and providing part effective date.
Do I hear it? We have a...
All moved.
Okay. We have a motion, excuse me, a motion is made by Mr. Kanaak, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Any further discussion? Appearing to be none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Like, sign, opposed, nay. Motion carries. In compliance with Florida statutes, a public hearing has been held on September 19, 2019, for the purpose of considering the tentative fiscal year 2020 mileage rate necessary to fund the tentative fiscal year 2020 annual budget. This concludes the budget-public hearing component of tonight's meeting. The final public hearing is scheduled for Monday, September 23, 2019, at 5:30 PM here at the Hart Administrative Offices in Ebor City. Thank you. I was asked to give a few seconds for transitioning. Okay. We'll now transition into the regular board meeting. I'm going to call this portion of the meeting to order, and first order of business will be the approval of the minutes from the August 5, 2019 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So who made the motion? Okay. So I have a motion in a second. Any discussion, any corrections? Appearing to be none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Likewise, a no. One item of janitorial is the pulling of item 7B from the agenda regarding the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Service. We're going to wait until the full board is here. So if there's anybody in the public who came to speak about that, we won't be discussing that this evening. Okay.
Do we have an alternative date for that next, that we'll do that at the next meeting?
We do not have a date yet, but I will certainly keep you apprised of when we will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public input on agenda items? Mr. Hargis, was this about an agenda item, or was it something not on the agenda?
Yes, sir. I...
Okay. You have three minutes. Please identify yourself. Thank you.
Thank you for having me back. We want to thank the Hart staff and the board for including the reinstatement of our bus 46, serving Palmetto Beach and DeSoto Park, and asked them to approve the Offer Transportation project list in item 9A. According to 2pointhomes.com, our neighborhood has a median income of $33,000. We're largely dependent on public transportation, and our residents currently sit at a competitive disadvantage over other neighborhoods in a similar income bracket. Several private developers have taken an interest in our quiet neighborhood, and it's going to allow us to continue to grow. We're set to boom, and we need the board's help to get our residents back to work. And I just ask that you approve the Offer Transportation Act or project list in 9A and bring the bus back to Palmetto Beach. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward... Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else who wish to speak on agenda items?
Yes.
Please come forward. State your name. You have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Laura Meyer. I'm vice president of the Neighborhood Association, Palmetto Beach Community Association, speaking on 9A alongside Neil Hargis. The only thing I wanted to add is that one of the details preventing developers and investors from coming into the area and getting large-scale projects approved is the lack of public transportation. So there seems to be this disconnect as they move through the permitting process. So not only did people who used it not have the service once it was discontinued, but it will, it's acting as a preventive measure for us to allow our area to grow, which is obviously something we're interested in. So same thing he said, just reinstating it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, we have the chief executive officers report. Mr. Limer?
All right. Thank you, everyone. Members of the board. This one, CEO report, I'm going to start with the preparations regarding Hurricane Dorian. Hart was actively working, monitoring Hurricane Dorian, and worked with all of our community partners in Hillsborough County, as well as the City of Tampa offices of emergency management. We were prepared for an evacuation service as instructed by Hillsborough County. Our responsibility, of course, is for the safety and health of all of our employees and customers, as well as providing safe conditions that are oftentimes very much highlighted in times such as hurricane preparation activities. We are collectively, you know, collectively, of course, very thankful that Dorian did not set their sights on Tampa Bay, but certainly appreciate the opportunity to run through a live drill of emergency management procedures. I would like to personally express my sincere appreciation to all of the Hart employees who really came forward to not only do their day jobs, which is, you know, of course, providing safe service to our 35,000 customers who travel on Hart, but they did this all while undertaking countless emergency preparedness actions. Special thanks, of course, to our bus operators and customer service representatives who were providing real-time updates and hurricane information to all of our customers. Moving on to the Summer Blast Pass program was really an investment in the next generation of transit riders. It was a target, it was targeted at students between the ages of five and 18 with really the goal of increasing their use of transit instead of driving to their summer jobs or wherever they might be going. In each of the three months of the Summer Blast Pass program, June, July, and August, ridership grew significantly, nearly doubling between June and July alone. Total ridership for the three-month program this year was over 83,000 rides, which was up 400% from the last time Hart ran this program. So certainly very pleased with the results there. Moving on, Hart does offer discountants for students at multiple universities and colleges within Hillsborough County. University of South Florida students ride free with their valid USF ID. Hillsborough Community College students can buy a semester pass for only $110. Many other institutions, such as University of Tampa, offer a deeply discounted monthly pass for roughly $48. So moving on to lighting, the LED streetlight upgrades are ongoing on the Marion Transit Way, as you can see from the pictures here. Landscaping upgrades have been made to the Marion Transit Center, and then also the Britton Plaza Station lighting has been upgraded with solar lighting as well to really enhance overall safety. And I would like to also announce a set of new hires, as well as promotions, to the Hart team, starting with the new director of communications. Hart has named veteran journalist Carson Chambers as director of communications for Hart. In this role, she is set to lead a team of professionals to elevate connections between Hart and our community, utilizing a wide range of channels, and serve as the agency spokesperson. Chambers is an Emmy award-winning national headliner, Sigma Delta Chi, and AP award winner. She relishes serving her community, emceeing nonprofit events for Shriners Hospital for Children, and of course, Meals on Wheels. Next up, Carla Williams was promoted to Director of Business and Community Engagement at Hart. In this new role, Ms. Williams will be over the business and community engagement functions, as well as the disadvantaged business enterprise program at Hart as we seek to grow. Carla Williams has been with Hart for over 20 years, working in various roles related to outreach. She's also president of COMTO, which is the Conference of Minority Transportation Officials, the Central Florida chapter, and is a member of the COMTO National Board as well. Carla has not only achieved recognition by the Black Women's Business Owners, Executive, and Entrepreneurial Organization, but as well as the Onyx Award as Women on the Mood Move and Visit Tampa Bay Hometown Hero. And then lastly, Lena Pettit was also promoted to Chief of Policy and Performance. In her new role, Lena will play an integral role in the office of the CEO as the liaison between the CEO Leadership Team Board, as well as the Independent Oversight Committee, with responsibility for really driving the overall development, implementation, and reporting of policy, strategic plans, as well as Hart's mission and vision. Ms. Pettit started her career at Hart 17 years ago, and during this time, she has continued to hold positions of increasing responsibility. to hold positions of increasing responsibility. Ms. Pettit holds a master's, and she's a very active member of the APTA Board Administrator Committee, and is an alumnus of Leadership FPTA, as well as Leadership Hillsborough. Lena is also out of the country as we speak, so she could not be here today. So, in closing, I have a couple of employee news items that are very exciting. Hart Maintenance Employee Sherri Berian is an acquirer that sang the National Anthem yesterday at the Bucks game. We are all very proud of Ms. Berian, and of course, go Bucks. Kemely Green, Manager of Customer Service and Paratransit, was recently appointed to serve in the Executive Board of the National Transit Call Center Peer Group as Vice Chairperson. It's really a network of national fixed route and paratransit call center pros to increase collaboration, sharing of best practices, resources, and really focused on improving the overall customer services at transit agencies nationwide. So, building on the success of our great team, I did want to briefly talk about our proposed FY 2020 Performance Scorecard. The team has been working on this as we have been building our proposed budget. I will be sharing the scorecard with you many times over, over the next several weeks. But I did want to share with you this evening just the draft plan. You have a copy of the actual performance scorecard at your seats as well. It has kind of a blue ribbon on the back, or on the top of the scorecard. So, you know, any organization that understands what success looks like is really able to align all elements of the organization to achieve the success. And success is really identifying the what. It's driven, by and large, by mission and vision and outcomes, identifying how, which is really a lot of the activities, the tactics, the budget, as well as the employees, and really finishing with who. As you all know, we have a very clear mission and vision, as well as a set of outcomes that we've been focusing on. You have just heard about the work plan to really focus on this overall success, the work activities, the budget, the metrics to monitor progress, and all of these become really aligning behind how to drive success. So, we've certainly gone through that process as well. Sorry, jumped backwards. And, you know, I've said this many times over, definition of success is being a best-in-class transit agency driven by this culture of excellence. So, we have recommended success outcomes for the board's consideration. Again, we're going to be doing multiple reviews of these. I'm a sports guy, so if this is a football team, this is, the success outcomes is really the end zone. So, we've built a capital program in operating tactics in order to really find the end zone and deliver on those outcomes. And we've built the performance scorecard such that management, as well as the board, can look up at the scoreboard and ensure that we are on the right track to score points by the end of the fiscal year. Sorry about all the football, but it says something in the air. And finally, we are creating individual employee ownership of each of the elements that are on the scorecard, with clear individual ownership around these work tactics, work tactics, as well as the metrics, to inspire really a culture of ownership as well. So, with all of that as context, let me share with you the four key areas of success outcomes with you. You all have seen these as part of the budget preparation, but they are the customer experience, community value, employee success, as well as overall financial performance of the organization. And really, to continue the football metaphor, these are tactic examples. These are only examples, but think of tactics as the plays that are called in order for us to find the end zone. We've really constructed a capital and operating budget that funds these activities. This is not a complete list. Again, these are only some of them that are really designed to make Hart successful. On the screen, these are just highlights of the work that we will undertake in 2020. And once again, the draft performance scorecard is at your seat. And this is really so the management team, as well as you, the board, can look up at the scoreboard and make sure that, once again, we're on the right track. You can also see the scorecard aligns with the four key areas of focus and is very much data-driven to allow for continuous improvement and consists of metrics that we are going to monitor and report on quarterly. So, you will be able to see the score. These scores will be weighted. Again, some of the quantitative details are located on the performance scorecard to show general prioritized metrics, but of course, they all add up to a total score of 100. I'm going to go quickly through each one, very quickly. Customer experience focus area, as the board knows, we already perform very well within this category, but we're looking to set the bar even higher. Success really means an increase in how satisfied our customers are across not only bus service, but paratransit, as well as the Tico Streetcar on a comprehensive basis. There are several other key measures included in the customer portion as well. The second element is community value, really putting a stake in the ground and looking at success for the coming year, that we will see an increase in positive community sentiment for the value that Hart brings to the county. Third is our workforce, and we're really defining success here, is there will be an increase in engagement of all of Hart employees, no matter their job title. And finally, our fourth area of success is financial performance. We are recommending for the board's consideration that success in this space really comes down to our expenditures are consistent or less than our adopted budget in actual received revenues. So, I appreciate your consideration, and I'm happy to be responsive to any questions or feedback in the interest of, I know, you know, I know I threw quite a bit out here in the interest of a very lengthy agenda tonight, and to really allow you time to review all of these metrics. You're also, of course, welcome to reach out to me and be happy to talk with you in detail about the scorecard. I know I'm very much looking forward to beginning a new fiscal year and actively delivering to the work tactics listed here to deliver success overall to our community and, of course, our customers with that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Limer? Yes, Commissioner Kip.
Thank you. Just a quick comment from way back at the beginning, just the increase in the student ridership over the summer, 400%. I'm not sure what that means in real numbers, but that's great. I'll learn more about that later. And do we track the students from UT, USF, community colleges? Do we know the number of rides that they, because that might be really valuable information, being that their perspective, I mean, many more younger people interested in a transit service once we're able to expand it?
Absolutely. I do know that we track some of the student usage. Let me make sure it includes all of the colleges and universities within the county. I do know we track some of the ridership levels, so I will follow up.
Thanks.
Yes. Mr. Melendez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ben, thanks for a great report. I could talk for a half an hour on the things I want to mention here, but I'm just going to keep it very brief and just say, you know, Ben, when we were considering our alternatives and looking at folks, there were expectations, and there were things that were exchanged. I just want to tell you, just, you know, seeing the scorecard and seeing the, kind of, the foundation you're laying and some of the internal promotions, you're exceeding my expectations, and I just wanted to give you some good feedback. I love the sports analogy. I think, you know, we are, we're not a private organization, right? We're public. It's, the public gets what they get, and I think the self-accountability and the performance standards, I think, the climate and the tone that you're setting, I think, is great, because we do have to, right, we have to be, have an internal check, right, to really deliver, and I just wanted to say very positive. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, there will be no chair's report. I really got nothing to say, anyway. General Counsel's report.
Yes, sir. Before we get into the new policy, I'd like to update you on the litigation. This is transportation surtax litigation. As you probably know, but maybe the public doesn't, and they watch this show sometimes on a replay, the House filed an amicus brief and challenged the transportation surtax on the basis that it was supposed to be a, quote, "clean initiative," not confused with affirmation that it will allow the citizens to make an informed decision. Perhaps I sound a little sarcastic, but the argument was a little less bad than that. I wasn't terribly enamored with it, but it is a strong argument, because there's some support for it in the case law and the statute, but I think he's wrong. In addition, the Senate has filed a motion today, and I think it was about 1:45, in order to join the House brief, amicus brief, and was granted the right within three hours by the Supreme Court, which is a rather remarkable, rapid, remarkably rapid response. So, the Senate has now joined in the House brief. We are going to have a meeting Thursday, I say "we," that's the defense counsel, Thursday at 2:00, to talk about response to the amicus briefs and who else we might want to try to articulate in our favor as an amicus brief. We're talking to the Florida Federation of Blind, obviously a significant recipient of some of the services we provide, and they're interested in filing, and there may be others who'll have that conversation on Thursday. We're trying to keep this a clean and lean approach, but unfortunately, things on occasion do get politicized. Just to warn you, given that the House has filed and the Senate has filed, I would not be shocked if the AG doesn't file an amicus brief. I would hope not, but we'll have to wait and see. Also, to tell you the timing, I sent you a memo. You may not have had a chance to read it. The oral argument is set for February 5th. We come forward from there in order to set our briefing schedules, et cetera. Technically, our brief, our answer brief is due September 20th. Due to the recent filing of the amicus briefs and the complications that causes, we're going to seek a 30-day, probably now a 20-day extension. Nonetheless, even with that extension, all the briefing will be done in a timeframe that will be completed in late November, early December at the latest, which is plenty of time for the oral argument to not have to be moved on February 5th. I was also asked a question today, I think it was Jean Duncan of the city, this because the oral argument is made on the 5th, when do they make a decision? There's no timeframe. They can make it quickly, they can make it in a couple of weeks, they can make it in a couple of months. It just depends upon how complicated they see it and what happens when they start talking about what the result ought to be. So, we could be looking very much into spring before we get an outcome. We're moving forward, as you know, with the IOC submittals, September 23rd, and we're trying to monitor that process and make sure what the IOC does is something that is consistent with the ordinance as it's been affected by the judge, so that it can be used to fund programs in 2020, but also perhaps keeps open a possibility we may get some relief from the Florida Supreme Court. So, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Right now, it's kind of in a state of flux, but that's the latest update in terms of timing and participation. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Oberlin.
I'm learning who to ask permission to speak from. What's the chances that this amicus brief is actually something saying how awesome it is that our voters voted on something that was so important and critical to the success and the economic drive of our county?
I do believe there are people that certainly share that view, and would be willing to file an amicus brief on our behalf to indicate that's the case, so I think that's useful to do. I would think that the Supreme Court's going to primarily make their decision based upon what the statute says and what it means, and I think those arguments are all going to be made. But, you know, I don't think it hurts to have people articulate our views in favor of it.
It sure would be nice if we would actually see that happen.
I think we will. I think that's what our conversation is about Thursday, and I think it's important for the community to hear support in the effort and not just the legal arguments that are quite candidly, sometimes too esoteric to even excite them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And your, Mayor Kester.
And to that point, the argument for the electric buses, a lot of that hinges on the Offer Transportation funding as well. So, you know, let your voice be heard.
Good comment. If nothing further on that, I'd like to point out to you the policy that we are considering this evening. It's a policy that the board directed me to craft. It is a participation-by-phone policy. This allows directors to participate by phone in those instances when they cannot attend in person. There are a couple of requirements that apply. First of all, there must be a forum physically present in order for participation by phone to occur. So, there will have to be at least, currently, seven members out of 13. If we end up adding directors, then it'll be, of course, a little bit different. Participation means full participation, including debate, deliberation, and voting, so you can fully participate telephonically. Notwithstanding that fact, an individual director may not do, may not telephonically participate more than twice a year, unless there's an exigent circumstance. The exigent circumstance or an emergency is going to be determined by the board. So, just to use an example, I apologize, Mayor. The mayor has used her two times to participate, and we have an emergency of some kind that requires her not to be able to be here. If you consider that to be, in fact, an emergency, she could participate beyond her second time. So, I think it's important for you to have that role as the board, and the board will make its decision. The only exception to that is if this board has an emergency meeting that is per se an emergency or exigent circumstance. So, that's essentially what the policy does. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to explain it, but I think it's pretty much what you had asked me to craft.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we need a motion for the first reading to approve, and then, so, do we have a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
So moved, then second. Okay. We have a second one, Mr. Koenig. Any comment?
I just want to say it does, in the world of busy lives, and the commitment to the board, on occasion, it is very helpful. All of us were born probably more than 30 years ago. Sometimes the age does get in the way of getting here on time or of getting here in a way, and so family members do matter as well. So, even though an emergency is the reason, it is appreciated that we have some flexibility to allow those individuals that find themselves unable to attend to still participate in a good way. So, thank you.
Any other comment? We have a motion in a second for approval, the first reading of Hart Policy Number 210.06 with telephonic board participation. Do I, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Second reading will be on the beating of September 23rd. We have a full board meeting on the 23rd?
No, we have a hearing.
Which is just a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the comment here on the 23rd will be, when will be the next, when will this be brought up again?
First week of October.
Does this require two readings?
Was it required two readings?
I really didn't recall that, but it was set up that way. Lena Pettit is much more familiar with these processes than I, so it won't hurt to do two readings.
Okay.
And we can do it in October, or you can do it September 23rd, whichever one, because this is a public hearing, so you can set it at either one.
You can do it at that point. Okay. All right. Well, whatever the agenda comes out to be. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing further, sir.
Okay. I just have one little comment regarding the briefs and so forth. I just hope that somebody from the Supervisor Elections Office just remembers to send them what the public's vote was on the referendum. So, okay.
I'd be happy to speak with them.
Let's see. We have our presentations. One minute.
Somebody's trying to call in.
We have an overview of the challenges to developing.
Commissioner Miller calling in.
I have no idea. Now I'm in trouble, huh?
So, good evening, board.
So, good evening, board. Chris Cochran, Director of Service Development. Our next presentation, we have a presenter as well as somebody who is joining him via telephone as well.
Ah, okay. Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, hi, everybody.
Mr. Shays, can you hear?
Yes, I can, Chris.
So, again, Christopher Cochran, Director of Service Development. We have a presentation from you by a gentleman, Mr. Charles Banks of R&amp;L Banks and Associates, as well as Mr. Kevin Shays, who is joining us via telephone. There is a lot of talk right now about interest in the CSX rail lines throughout Hillsborough County, throughout the region as well. There are varying degrees and understanding throughout the board as far as what goes into these types of projects, levels of effort, timing, funding, all of these things are, so we brought in Mr. Banks, who's an expert in this field. Mr. Shays is an expert as well. They've both worked together for a long time in multiple projects throughout the country to give a great presentation for you today. We know you're going to enjoy it. And then, hopefully, at the end of it, I'll open it up for some questions for you. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Banks.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be throwing a lot of information at you, and you'll have an opportunity to ask me any questions that you want. My name's Charles Banks. I'm president of RL Banks and Associates. We are a railroad consulting firm. That's all we do is railroad work. A lot of our work is for freight railroads, so we really understand the freight railroad perspective, and I think that's one of the reasons I was invited. But we also do a substantial amount of work on passenger rail, particularly new passenger railroads. Sorry, how do I advance the, what are you, just this one? Okay. So this is the agenda that I wish to follow. Mr. Shays is an attorney, and he will, he has a couple of slides to address here, and he's also here to answer your questions. I'm not an attorney, so I will answer all the easy questions, okay? So this is what we're going to discuss. First is the key messages and that we want to communicate to you and takeaways that we hope you will take away. We'll briefly go through the primary acquisition activities, which really consists of giving you an overview of all the agreements that would be involved, because, as you'll see in a minute, there are many of them. Also, the negotiations that would be involved, particularly with CSX. We'll drill down into some key negotiation issues, talk about regulatory issues, and some principles that I hope the agency will be able to follow with respect to negotiations, and then next steps. First key message is that I think, I don't think, I know, that this transaction, should it proceed, will be different than any real estate or any other deals that any of you have ever negotiated. And I'll get into that why later. There will be tons of complicated paperwork to work through and sign, including at least four major agreements which need to be negotiated, plus regulatory filings, which Mr. Shays will address in part in a moment. And while price will be a primary focus of the board, I imagine it is not the only key term. And in fact, I think Kevin and I would agree that all the other non-price terms collectively are more important than the actual price paid. It is critical that the board know what it wants to buy and/or operate, and that it be able to collectively prioritize those objectives. And because there is only one potential seller of rail lines in this county, it is critical that you deliberately consider alternatives to buying rail line. And then, I can't stress this enough, I don't know any of you personally or professionally, but development and continuous expression of a unified board and management position is paramount. So let's follow through with the agenda items now. And the first one was primary acquisition activities. I'm not going to read all of these, but I wanted to give you just a flavor for what's involved. I personally think that you should first figure out where you want to operate and how much you want to operate, because, in fact, that begins to affect, do you actually have the room on CSX right away to be able to operate what you want? Or are you going to need to have to add more track, things like that? But when you figure out enough for us to have an intelligent discussion with CSX about it, we would develop a negotiate, develop a term sheet, which we'll explain in a minute, which would be negotiated. It's a non-binding agreement. It's basically an overview of the objectives of both parties. That's the third item. The fourth is, we would commence negotiation of two types of agreement, a purchase-and-sale agreement and a joint-use agreement. A purchase-and-sale agreement, you can think of as a very complicated transaction, like buying your house or maybe buying all 384 houses in your neighborhood. That is a good analogy. But joint-use agreement is very different, because you're going to be purchasing track if you purchase any, that you're also going to have to share, at least in part, with freight trains. So it's very, very different than a normal transaction, real estate transaction. Anyway, there's a whole series of other things here. The point I'm trying to get across here is there are a lot of activities, a lot of steps. And no matter how efficient you operate and know how efficient Kevin and I might be and experience we might be, it's going to take a long time. You can't snap your fingers and do it. So here's just a quick overview of the agreements. The term sheet really sets the stage for the other agreements. It's, it's non-binding and outlines the proposed transaction and the party's objectives. That's really what's going on in the first column there. The purchase-and-sale agreement, we went over briefly. It is basically very much, think of the housing analogy, buying a house. The joint-use or joint operations and maintenance agreement goes by both joint use and JOMA, for those other words. This is a much more detailed and complicated agreement and goes outside your comfort levels, I would imagine. But it has to do with, as it says, using the rail corridor before, during, and after the transaction, and how all that, how things are going to take place as you step through the transaction. The provisions regarding use of specific tracks and specific switches, and what do we get, and what do you get? Who is doing the operations? Who's doing the dispatching? Who's going to decide which train goes first, the freight or the passenger? Or when the freight can operate? Or when the passengers can operate? All those kinds of nitty-gritty details beyond the actual real estate purchase, if you will. So that's the middle column. If there's going to be new construction, there'll probably be a separate construction agreement to address any new construction. For example, if CSX says, well, on this section of track, we want four miles of double track so that we can operate through here without messing you up or vice versa. That's the kind of thing that could happen. And then there's a series of other agreements. They're probably have to interface with Amtrak, and there's a situation of, are we going to have fiber-optic, enjoy fiber optic rights in the right of way? Or are you, are we going to get the billboard revenues? Or are you, lots of other issues. I think you get the idea. Hope you do. So all I'm showing here is that the term sheet kind of informs and sets the stage for all those others, because it addresses very briefly the issues. Now, I want to give you just a little flavor of the overview of the negotiations. And let me start by saying that bilateral negotiations, I would say by definition, are very unsatisfying when neither party enjoys no next best alternative. It's one thing to go try to buy the Pontiac that is, and you're making your heart beat fast. And when the Pontiac dealer you're dealing with says, sorry, I'm not going to go that low, well, you can say, well, I'm going to go to the Pontiac dealer in the next town, or I'm going to go to the Chevrolet dealer. You don't have that option here. And by the way, the CSX doesn't have this option either. There isn't any party that's going to offer CSX anything close to what Hart will offer. So it's really a one-v-one kind of a situation, which, again, makes it very different, I think, than your typical real estate transaction. So let me justify, can contrast the way in which CSX sells a line for continued freight use. Contrast that with the way it sells a line for future passenger use. Now, our firm was recently involved with a group of entrepreneurs who bought a rail line from Jacksonville to Pensacola earlier this year, 380 miles long. There were at least a half a dozen potential buyers of that rail line. Here, that's on the left line, the freight column, if you follow me. On the right, the passenger, I don't think anybody's going to try to outbid Hart for buying all the lines to use for passenger rail service in this county. Going back to my analogy of the 380 miles, CSX employed an auction process. They said, this is how we're going to do it. And while our client thought they paid too much, and I'm sure CSX thought they didn't get enough, the fact of matter is, there was an auction, and they selected somebody. We don't have the benefit of that in this situation. Just one party versus one party. Dropping down to the third item under freight, on the, on our client's side in the freight transaction, economic realities limited how much they could afford to pay. They had to, they, the issue, what CSX wanted was, how much are you going to pay us for the line, one upfront cost? And how much are we going to have to pay you for each car that you pick up on our line and deliver to us at the end of the line? So two numbers. That was basically the bid. And economic realities limited all the bidders, right? But here, we don't have that situation. We don't have the discipline, if you will allow me to use that term, of saying how much we can bid because CSX wants $1 more than you're willing to pay. That's it. You know, they don't really know how much it's worth, and neither do we. That's what makes it both interesting and challenging. And so my bottom line here on this, number two, is that on the freight side, the marketplace yielded the price. Parties may not have been happy with it, but they did the deal because they were satisfied that they got the best price they could. That kind of approach will not be available to us here. So therefore, negotiations with CSX will take a very long time, will be very frustrating, and will encounter numerous roadblocks, because neither CSX nor Hart have any real alternative to dealing with each other regarding a given line. Okay? And CSX interests don't align well always with Hart's interests. So let me give you an example. On the, on the web, and with Chris's help, I drew some quick maps here to show the southwest corridors and northeast corridors. That isn't to say that, that that's what your priorities will be established for us if we help you, but rather just as an example of where we're, how this works. So I reproduced those now on this map and say, suggest that as far as those two corridors are concerned, this is Hart's view of the Hart corridors, at least as far as the southwest and northeast corridors. So this links University of South Florida, if you can't see the map well enough, with the Air Force Base McDill. So that's Hart's view of the world. But this is CSX's view of the world. Everything on the right-hand side, all those blue lines or black lines are CSX now and would be CSX afterwards. Everything in the red are CSX lines that would continue in the future, but that would be affected by a line that is red and black dotted or crosshatched in between. And I say "affected by" because in order to get between the lines on the right and the lines on the left, you have to go through those lines in the middle. Does everybody understand that? Okay. So here's an extended view of CSX's corridor. And I believe that it is unlikely that CSX would agree to readily establish a gatekeeper, i.e. Hart, through which it would have to operate to reach the balance of its network. So CSX may well want to sell or insist on selling the entirety of its Brooksville and Clearwater subdivisions. And I recognize there's an inconsistency between your service territory and what I'm telling you here, but that's why I'm telling you. So here are a couple of negotiation issues. The valuation of land and the way in which it's done in these transactions are incredibly favorable to the seller. They assume that the land to the east or the west of a north-south rail line sells at exactly, or sell, should sell, at exactly the same price as, as the territory to the, on either side of the trackage. But in some cases, the CSX right of way is so narrow, or it's, you know, in a floodplain, or it's, you know, it's constrained, so you couldn't really develop it. It's in many cases, it's in the middle of a block, you know, particularly up north towards USF. It's in the middle of the block, and how would you get a road down there? You know, I guess you could put the roads across, but right now, they're all blocked by the rail line. So you can't. So I think the land, the way in which CSX will value the land, regardless of what we do, favors the seller. Second, there's no real satisfactory way to value the track assets. My firm does more of that than anyone in the country. And the fact of matter is, neither the seller nor the buyer is satisfied, frankly, with the numbers we come up with, because if we go down this road, you'll understand, it's just complicated. There's no methodological way which satisfies all parties, because the differences between method one and method two are just so great. There's a tremendous negotiating imbalance that exists in favor of the selling railroads versus any buying agency. I mean, look at the seller's advantages, their experience. CSX has done this many times. This is not their first rodeo, although it's not Kevin's first rodeo or Charlie's first rodeo. So it's, it's, you have some experience on your end, but they have much more. They're a single party, and they will operate the way a large, very large, modern corporation operates. There will be a chain of command. There will be no democratic principles in Florida. And their profit focus is huge. I mean, they use stock options, and those stock options, even in an industry as old-fashioned as the railroad industry, you know, they get people to produce. So they will be very profit-oriented. They have a private agenda, and the seller can, quite frankly, can afford to wait. The last time I visited Tampa was about 20 years ago, and I made a similar presentation. So here we are 20 years later. They've waited. They could have cashed out, but they didn't. They waited. And they'll wait you out if they, if they're of that mind. The typical seller strategies are power of legitimacy. They'll say, well, this is the way it's been done everywhere. They will intimidate. They will attempt to split or lobby the agency. They will attack the buyer's negotiating team. So let me tell you before they tell you, that when they tell you that Kevin Shays and Charlie Banks are obstacles to getting this deal done in a satisfactory fashion, that means we're doing a good job on your behalf. Okay? They will push the limits, and they will, frankly, will try to just outlast you. But all is not lost, because, as I tell you, the seller has its own problems. They literally don't know how much they can yield from this transaction. Kevin, you want to step in and talk about, your slide is up for key negotiation?
Okay, sure. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for letting me listen to Charlie's excellent presentation and add my two cents here. The next slide deals with a couple of the side issues that are really critical, and as Charlie said in a as Charlie said, and I'll just confirm that I agree with him, that these other issues are at least as important as price. And the first of the two on this slide is liability allocation. And this will, this will be something that will shock you unless you've done a line sale before. The seller, CSX, will come to you, and they will propose that, in any shared operating scenario, that Hart, having paid good coin for the line, and having built its own infrastructure to make passenger rail possible, ought to pay any liability or claims that arise that would not have arisen if the passenger service never existed. Just let that sink in for a minute, because it sounds fundamentally unfair. Their view is, and will be, "Pay me what my line is worth, and then, when you start up, build your own stuff so that you don't affect my ability to run freight. And then, when you start operating, if I mess up, you still pay."
Is this a great picture or what?
And the reason for that is, because they build this assumption into their willingness to sell. The price is one thing, the other terms are another thing. But they have the discipline, and they think in centuries, not minutes or hours, they think in centuries, or at least decades, they have, and they have the internal corporate discipline to say, no matter, almost no matter what the price, I'm not going to sell unless I can tell my management and my stockholders that we have not taken on any additional liability. Because they, and they will say this, they will say, "One bad accident on this line," which everybody works hard to avoid, "but one bad accident on this line could be 10 times the price of a line." And so, they will present you with this but-for liability and this rationale. And as hard as it may be to swallow, our recommendation will be that you accept it because it's a predicate to a line sale, and your colleagues around the country have accepted it. The one caveat for those of you who are lawyers or like law, they will not propose, they will not propose that Hart, cover the liability associated with willful, bad actions on the part of CSX employees. If a CSX employee puts tape over the locomotive horn and drives the train drunk or on drugs, that will be an exception to Hart's liability. And they recognize, they're not doing that out of the goodness of their heart, they're doing it because they recognize that that kind of a limitation, that kind of a provision would make the entire liability section unenforceable as against public policy. So there will be that one exception, which is sometimes advantageous when you talk with other stakeholders, or the public about the deal, or the press. You're not signing up to pay for their bad actions, but you are signing up to pay for their negligence. The other reason why we're going to recommend to you that you accept that is that you can cover that risk with insurance. And that's the second thing on the slide here. CSX is going to ask for a very large per-current amount on the insurance. 500 million is kind of the new floor for these transactions. Now, it is possible, and that's why we say negotiate here, it is possible to persuade CSX that the liability limit should be limited to a number that is equivalent to the Amtrak liability cap, which I think is in the neighborhood of 260, 260 million right now, it's indexed, and I haven't looked it up recently. There is a point to negotiate here, and so, if you take these two issues together, you hold your nose frankly, on but-for liability, but you, as a business matter, you can cost that liability by pricing your insurance and knowing that there's a definable number on the cost of taking on that responsibility.
Kevin, you ready for the next slide?
Sure.
Now you all understand Kevin didn't want to come here in person, right?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Right, I'm the bearer of the real bad news, right? The regulatory issues, yeah, the regulatory issues are less frankly, of a concern. Once you have your deal, what we would do is, we would go to the Surface Transportation Board, which is the agency that regulates railroad line sales. We would ask them to confirm our view that the way you've structured the transaction, allowing CSX to continue to have sole responsibility for freight service, while allowing Hart to introduce passenger rail service. The way it's set up does not make Hart responsible for any freight service. And you do this not because you actually think CSX is going to not show up someday, you do it because it allows Hart, in the establishment of the passenger rail service, to know that it's not subject to the very expensive railroad laws that are listed on this slide. The Railway Labor Act is expensive because contracts never terminate. The Retirement Act adds a layer of costs to every employee. Unemployment insurance is generally more expensive under the railroad laws than workers, than unemployment insurance under state law. And the Federal Employers Liability Act is the liability, is the personal injury law of railroad. It's frankly, a terrible law because it rewards people who are, it punishes people who are liable, even if they have legitimate injuries, and it gives people money who don't have legitimate injuries. It's just a terrible system, and even though you probably don't love workers' comp, workers' comp is better than Fila. And so, this regulatory process becomes a very small thing from the standpoint of your strategy and your management. But we go through this process with the Surface Transportation Board to know that on the day you close, you haven't taken on any of the four horsemen of the apocalypse.
Thanks, Kevin.
Sure.
Kevin's going to just hang around when you have questions, right? Thanks, Kevin.
Yes, of course, sure.
So, here are the key, I think, negotiating principles Kevin and I would hope the agency would abide by. The first is, know what you want and prioritize what that is. Because you can't go to CSX without, you know, Commissioner One may want to start running service from the east, and Commissioner Two may start running service from the north. And, you know, we need to have an organized ask, that's really what we're saying here. And we need to know what form of access we may want. You all may want to serve, I understand, the south is growing very, very quickly here, but there are, the most strategic CSX freight lines extend partially south from Tampa. So, it may be impossible to buy that line, same from Brandon coming in towards Tampa. So, just what we want, what they want, may not be the same. So, it's important to prioritize. Your behavior is critical. Your hire offers, my experience has been, will only encourage CSX to raise its floor. So you need to decide what you want to pay, for what service and what lines, and then try to stay with that number. Because if you try to raise the number to appease them, you will be as successful as Neville Chamberlain was. Find a way to have options. And one of those options is, it's just too much money for us, we can't do it. If you, it's like buying that red Jaguar you always wanted. If you're determined to walk out of the showroom with it, you will pay every last cent, plus a penny. Try to link negotiations to items CSX wants. Maybe CSX has been telling you for years, "We really don't want to go here, we really don't want to do this, we really are concerned about the fencing here or there," those kinds of things. Get some other parts into this deal that aren't strictly transaction-related. And most importantly, don't negotiate against yourselves, particularly if the press is going to pick it up. I'll never forget negotiating for a year and a half in Los Angeles, and the head of the Santa Fe said that the chairman, say, equivalent of Ben here, he said, "Ben just put a very expensive cart before the horse because they had just signed to buy $320 million worth of rail cars, even though they didn't have access to put those cars anyplace." Because the pressure, the political pressure, is very great once the money is available.
Charlie, can I interject one thing on this, on that point?
Please, go ahead.
Find a way to have options. That's a very tricky one, except you have an advantage there, as I understand it. Hart has so many transportation and transit objectives, that you don't have to say, "I have a different rail line, and I'm going to go buy a different rail line." Just like with the red Jaguar, you could walk out and say, maybe you wouldn't walk out and say, "I'm going to buy another Jaguar." You would walk out and say, "I'm going to buy a different car. I'm going to find a different way to achieve mobility in my community." To the extent that you are able to credibly convince CSX that you have other ways of creating mobility in Hillsborough County, you have leverage, because they will have a concern that you will walk away from their line and do another project. And this gets back to the discipline of the board. Even if you're, you would prefer strongly as a board to do the rail project, you've got to convince some plausible ability to tell CSX, "That's too expensive, I'm going to do bus rapid transit." Or, "If that's too expensive, I'm going to do something else." And that is how you can create the competition, if you will, to keep those price negotiations under control.
And that's why it's so, or thanks, Kevin, that was very helpful. And that's why it's so important for the board to have a unified position, that's why I'm getting on that point. Because you can't have two of you thinking at any price, and two of you thinking at no price, and six of you sitting in the middle, right? You have to reach consensus, whether it's a first time or not, okay? Okay. Oh, the last slide said, I'm a big Rolling Stones fan, it said, "The Rolling Stones were wrong because their first big hit was 'Time is on my side.'" I can tell you, time will not be on your side when the public begins to understand the possibility, as some of these speakers previously were saying, "Let's get something going," or "Let's get rail out here, we need more service, et cetera." When that money falls eventually into your hands to spend, there's going to be tremendous, it's going to be a blessing and a curse. And that's all I'm trying to say here. Time is not on your side. CSX has waited 20 years with light-density freight lines, for the most part, which are probably not generating anything close to a return on investment for them, but they waited 20 years. That tells you, they're not in a big hurry to sell. So, you may hate this slide, but this is sort of the way I view your role. You've got the CSX negotiating, trying to get every last penny they can get. By the upper right, the passenger rail interests, what I mean is passenger rail advocates, saying, "Okay, now we've got the money, let's do this, let's spend this." So they're sending in pressure from one direction. Meanwhile, some of the neighboring community interests are going to, neighborhood community interests are going to say, "Well, we don't want those trains here, we want to be able to get them. We want that person who comes to take care of my mother to be able to get here much more easily, but we don't want any trains to actually stop in our neighborhood because that'll create traffic, right? We want doves to just take all the passengers to the stations, you know, bring them, okay? That's the point of this." And then, of course, the press, even if they're trying to be helpful, it's going to be, it's going to generate pressure and stress on you. So, next steps, at least my recommendations are, we should meet with CSX transportation representatives and take their current temperature on what might be for sale and what might not, where they see problems, et cetera. We should review and document previous, recent studies, to the extent we can build on them, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We should assess the railroad physical plant to see what it's capable of and what it's not, is there room for two tracks or three tracks, or not? Consensualize an operating plan, so we can figure out what it is that we want when we go to CSX. And we're ready for your questions. Thank you for your attention. Thank you. Any questions for our speakers? Yes, Ms. Evans?
Thank you for your presentation, that was excellent. I was looking at your next steps, and I was trying to make sure, I was thinking, you know, based on looking at the overall issues, what order to take those steps in. And on page, on slide four, where you are talking about primary acquisition activities, the second one, first and second one seemed critically important. For example, establishing the service plan objectives, what are we trying to accomplish? What kind of service are we looking to try and accomplish? What assets are out there that look attractive? And then determining engineering constraints. I wish I understood everything that I should know about what freight lines, heavy, lights, commuter rail, light rail, RDT rail, I mean, you know, when we're looking at the asset that is the lines that CSX currently owns, that is, that are located in Hillsborough County, and also in the surrounding counties around us, understanding, you know, what those lines could possibly carry, I think is an important part of that conversation, and what we would want them for. I think whether it be, you know, a long line coming from, say, Plant City to Tampa, or Brooksville, to, which is not in our county, but Brooksville to downtown.
You're talking about in a passenger rail context, correct?
Yeah, the different, the different types of modalities that would actually provide the services we're looking for. I can understand that I'm far from an expert, but it would probably flavor the initial conversation with CSX before we would ever, I mean, when I'm looking at your next steps, I guess maybe meeting with the representatives is just to say, "Hey, we'd like to start the conversation again."
Yeah, I mean, whoever we meet with is not going to be in a position to bind CSX. But I think we should start the conversation by saying, "What are your view of your current lines?" And go with that. And I agree with you, it is kind of a dynamic situation, because you need to, you need to know what your priorities are. You can't go to CSX and say, "We've got, you know, $24 million to spend," or, "$240 million to spend, "Help us spend it right, because we won't spend it right." And frankly, you know, you have political and other considerations, environmental considerations, that you have to weigh. And that's not CSX's job, and it's not Kevin's job, and it's not Charlie's job. It's your job, and particularly the staff's job, to help you figure out those priorities. But we need to hear from everybody, right? But the point is that CSX is not going to say, "Everything is going to be for sale." And when they begin to tell us what isn't, I think it'll help shape where, how we move forward.
Okay, and then the next items, you know, reviewing the documents, the physical plant and the operating plans, you know, all of those are things that play into, hi, what do we want to do, what do we want to use? So I could see how all of those steps need to be fully thought-through by the board and by your team, or the team that we end up working with. You know, everybody knows if we get the SRTAX, if we have those monies, if, you know, we have the percentage that's guided and/or mandated by the SRTAX language for fixed guideway. You know, that's, we have that for 30 years. We don't have, you know, 10 years to figure this out. Especially if it takes a capital investment for making this happen. So, you know, yes, CSX may have all the time in the world to wait, but we don't. If we're going to be able to really offer a great deal that actually serves both parties. So I think it is important that we, you know, do have some thoughtful conversation about what we want to see, short-term, long-term, maybe put it in phases, because planning all that out is going to be a little bit of a monster to do. But I do think that it's critical that we do recognize the value of starting the conversation pretty quickly. Because I think, while everybody can do the math- Because I think while everybody can do the math based on, hopefully, if we have a SRTAX and if we actually start able to spend it at the end of next year, because we have to wait until February to get started, you know, or later, that we do consider, you know, at least knowing what we want between now and then. And that would be helpful, I think, in terms of helping this whole group move forward as we look at an asset that could best serve the entire region as well as Hillsborough County.
I appreciate your comment. Let me just add on the item, the third item, assess railroad physical plant. It really would feed into three or four different things. I haven't had a chance to address that, so let me do it quickly. First of all, it would tell you what the track, the rail assets themselves, what shape they're in, how much it would cost to fix them so that you can operate the train service fast enough to attract people, right? So that's one item. Second of all, the amount that you're going to have to compensate CSX for those assets should you purchase that, that segment of track. So that's a second purpose it fills. And the third is, it also will help you figure out, how much room do we have to actually put in, for example, a second track? Or, God forbid, CSX should say, "We need a separate track for freight in this territory over here." Well, is there even room for three tracks? Could you even build it? So even though there's only one bullet, it actually is, produces several byproducts.
Right. Thank you very much for your.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. I feel a little bit like we're jumping into the deep end of the pool here. And I know, because I've been at this for many years, that kind of the base here, I think for most people, we're going to need more of a, honestly, to any public board that I'm familiar with, I have not seen a coherent presentation on CSX since 2014, when, and that was two years before I was elected, where the TMA, the TMA had a meeting in Pinellas. And it was packed room. And Bob O'Malley, who was former CSX government representative and who used to be kind of the person, the go-to person on all this, he is now with Bright Line, you know, people were jumping over, I mean, elected officials, everybody there was practically jumping over the daisies or the tables in that place to, you know, say, "We have to do something. We have to do something." And there was this true sense of impatience and desperation that kind of got lost and just went away because no one's heard anything very much about it since. We have a 2012 study that I know about the MPO in Hillsborough County that was a, it was never quite completed, from what I understand. I've been through and read it, but it never kind of was finished. It's always been in a draft form, for whatever reasons. I think AECOM did that. And in 2016, there was the presentation that was made with regards to this regional BRT, which was really not a treatment of this at all and barely explained it, didn't even bring it to USF. And so I think for everybody to really get a flavor for this, including the public, but even members of this board, of the county commission, I'd be willing to help. I'm not sure where, but we really, I think people need a real solid understanding of some of the things that you were mentioning. I mean, just so we have some base level knowledge. And a part of that, I thought, was also we've passed going out to Sun Rail, which is a CSX converted commuter rail that happened just recently in Orlando. And, you know, we could understand the pricing, the locomotives they used, what system, all of that stuff, and how they paid for it. Tri-Rail in Miami was much the same thing, but that was done decades ago, but is operational and fully paid for, for operations and was fully purchased by FDOT, as well as Sun Rail was fully purchased by FDOT at the time. Some of the finer negotiation points, I think, you know, are well worth us hearing about, but that might kind of be more a step or two in the future, although I understand your reasons for wanting to bring it here tonight. But I'm pretty sure with the liabilities and maybe you can, if I'm wrong, but even when we go forward, I think FDOT has assumed all those liabilities in the case of Sun Rail and Tri-Rail.
Kevin, do you know that? Do you know the answer to that comment?
I think that FDOT largely accepted the but-for liability. And I haven't looked at the 1988 FDOT Tri-Rail deal for a long time, and I think that's correct.
And the only thing was here in Tampa, where the CSX tracks crossed our streetcar, became an issue and FDOT would not take liability for that, although they did for other systems in Orlando and Miami. And so I believe that we pay liability at that one crossing. But to me, it was, it was something that, that really, we should have gotten the same advantages on our streetcar that Orlando and Miami have enjoyed for many, 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 Miami for decades, as well as all their operations and all their purchase. And the entire purchase of Sun Rail, by the way, was done without a tax or anything like that. And it was done with 1% infrastructure loan from the state, but the state, the feds, and everyone else, and no, and operating costs for seven years. You know, FDOT's been pretty clear, that will never happen again. But I'm just trying to show that the, there, you know, that I think we have to be thinking in these directions and learn more about this. I know we had some conversation about light rail versus commuter train, how that would work or where, whether, you know, initially, CSX said years ago that they would only go for the, I talked to you about this today, the full lines rather than partial lines. They seemed more open, which surprised me, to the possibility of partial lines. The South Tampa line wasn't available for a long time. Now seems to be available, perhaps. So I think those are, but those are all things, I think it's kind of a predicate before moving into these heavier issues that the community has to get a grip on. And because Ben is new here and because even many people are new on this, this board or haven't been involved in this issue, there may be a sense that that has been laid before. But I go around the community and speak about this and people don't really know where the tracks are, don't know how this works, don't know really what the possibilities are. But there's been quite a groundswell of enthusiasm and interest in our tracks. By the way, do go through some of the best places in the, of any community, of any of the other communities in terms of service. And this is the most, that track in between Ebor and USF is the most transit-dense area in the entire region and has greater possibilities than the Sun Rail and Tri-Rail even had from some of the, those I've spoken to.
If, if I may, the purpose of our presentation was to, you, I'm sure are right in saying that we have jumped way out ahead of where you all are. But the point is, should you be successful in your challenge and that money starts coming in, I want you all to know that, that doesn't mean the month after that, you're going to have a deal with CSX. If we've disappointed you in what we've told you, then we've succeeded. Because Kevin and I and Chris and Ben want you to understand that this is a long and winding road and it isn't, there is a lack of economic rationale that is maddening. I can say that because I'm an economist. So it's going to take a long time. The other stuff, figuring out what's light rail and commuter rail, yeah, we can do that. And that's easy. That is easy compared to the stuff that we've just thrown at you.
Right. And I appreciate all that and I understand where you're coming from, but it may, and the reason I go back on this is because I know a lot of people kind of don't have the history and Ben wouldn't have had that history and many others. And so I think it's important because there may be a sense that people know a lot more or have heard, even had one single minute of opportunity to hear more about it than they actually ever have. The other thing is, and I can appreciate all the specific nuances that you put here. I know the Sun Rail negotiations took eight years from, I believe, eight years from day one to, to beginning operations, which is actually a short, a short time in some people's conception. But three of those years were spent negotiating a contract with FDOT, with the state of Florida, a contract that, you know, it's now the, and that was done just, it's opened in 2014, so fairly recently. So some of the wheel, some of it's been created for us and should give an opportunity to us.
It's a template.
But, but, a template, right. So, and I just want to, you know, we've heard, I heard a comparison done where the, somehow some of the interstate roadways, which are decades out, would be built before we could do something like this. But the fact of the matter is, it was eight years in Orlando, but if it had done with, been done with speed, if it could have been done, with, without the three years of contract negotiations that have been done, it could have been done in five years. And that's, one of the things about this is that, you know, I think it's important for people to understand is that it is a, the tracks exist, so it's an opportunity that could be far closer than if we were to build new light rail, for instance, or even try to acquire roadway, which also will have its disadvantages and, and issues and has in many communities all over this country. The other thing is that while it's difficult, and I understand, and because of the reasons you point out, and that was, that was very, very good background, that I would like people to know that, because I keep hearing a dismissive, you know, "This can't be done because of the cost." But the Sun Rail track, and I've calculated this out and I've asked people to check on me and my facts, including FDOT, I've said it 25 times. And, and I even think I give it a high estimate, and that was like $20 million a mile for the Sun Rail track to get, to do the, buy the track the right-of-way, the locomotives, the stations, to make it turnkey. I believe that that was the cost. And just the phase that we already completed of I-275 per each mile was $120 million. So that's $20 million compared to $120 million. A lot of the new light rail, which is decades out and you have to establish right-of-way and all that, is about $100 million a mile is what they were talking about for, for instance, Greenlight Pinellas, which is, I think, you know, something that we can look at. So in terms of cost comparison. So I just really wanted to, to make that point as well.
So the economics of sharing the track, however they're shared, and that's what we need lawyers to make sure that they're shared the way we think they're going to be shared, the economics of being able to split those very high costs, make a shared-use solution, whether it's all purchase or partial purchase or whatever, very compelling compared to any other rail solution. That's why Kevin and I have so much of that business, because all the major cities in the United States want to have rail for all the reasons that you all and some of the people who addressed you earlier spoke of.
Right. And it's been done, you can see it all over. If you've gone from the Denver Airport into Denver, it's a CSX-type track that's been converted. If you went to the St. Louis, I don't know who went there for that transit, that, you know, I knew immediately, I could tell when you get on it, that's the CSX, I was, track converted. I was telling you that I, in DC, you know, from DWI, I've taken the CSX track to Camden Yards, I've taken the CSX track, and it was literally CSX track to Union Station in DC. So this has happened all over the country. So I just want to give those here because we hear very little about it, that it isn't, that it is something that is achievable, can be done, although it has its challenges and, and, you know, the, it is also, has its opportunities, of course, and...
I would be happy to come back at some point if you all want and give you a presentation on what are all the options, what are the technology options, et cetera. We did the same thing in Kansas City about a decade ago, just helping them to understand. But when you say commuter rail, what does that really mean?
Right.
When you say light rail, what do you really mean? If that's what... Okay. Thank you very much. Any other?
One more point.
Okay. Quickly, it's getting late.
I know. And, and that's really what my next question was, is, you know, do we workshop this? Do we have, because we obviously all have to live within the sunshine. And some, I would suggest that some of the board members may not know as many as others about the different types of technologies. So our next steps, in addition to the ones maybe you've recommended here, might need to include a board presentation on what our, what our choices are, whether it be, you know, own the whole line, whether it's share the line, what that really means. But when we have the most recent, "It's About Time" MPO survey done of our citizens here in Hillsborough County, come back to indicate that the very first solution, the highest percentage turnout answer of what do you want to see when it comes to transportation options, is over 80% of the citizens that filled out, almost 6,000, 7,000 that filled out the surveys indicated that they wanted to see some investment in rail. We have an opportunity to at least explore that, and I think it behooves us to do a good job of that.
Thank you. Mr. Blundus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation and the information. A couple of things, I'm going to keep it brief, just because it is getting, the hour's getting late, but I would like to say that, you know, I do see this as an exploratory conversation. You know, you brought up in your presentation the importance of showing, you know, consensus and agreement. Because what you presented is so far into, you know, the process. I think it is important to note, especially for those watching at home, that this is an exploratory conversation. And I don't want to speak for anyone else on the board, but the entire board isn't here. There are so many ifs that would have to accompany, you know, the, whether the tax were to hold, different things. Board consensus is one of those checkboxes in support. So in my humble opinion, I think that if we're really going to invest the taxpayer dollar even in just discussing this as an option, I think we really probably need to have a conversation about how the board as a whole feels. Because if there's not consensus at, you know, you don't want to, you know, go through a bunch of, I, I, I think the information is great, I really do. But I think that we would probably need to have kind of like a discussion on what is, what is the flavor of the board? What, you know, because, just because surveys and polls and things, and there's, there's been a discussion about it, where the, you know, the metal meets the rail really is here on the board. So I just wanted to make a point of that.
Director.
I also think a great presentation. Even though I have been over the years, meetings pertaining to this rail system, I agree with Tom Rand that should go a little bit further and get more information. Things that are debatable, need more information.
I would believe at this point that the executive committee will, will get together and come back to the, to the board with more information and next step, maybe a workshop, but, you know, whatever be, whatever they decide it's going to be.
One more. So we did vote to go to see Sun Rail. So you, that is being arranged?
Yeah. We've been speaking with the Hillsborough County MPO about opening it up a little bit wider, but we will be discussing that at the joint workshop of the Hillsborough County MPO as well as the board, December, October. But yes, we are advancing that and will be taking the track this fall.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very good. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Kevin. Okay, moving forward.
Thank you, everyone.
We have the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, excuse me, consent agenda, all in favor, please, and Nick, I'm saying aye. Like, sign no. Motion's carry. A and B are approved. Approval of action items to facilitate a presentation, we're going to flip-flop them, and nine B will be presented first for the resolution on the approval of the fourth one-year extension to the operators' agreement. Ruthie.
Good evening, Ruthie Wayes-Burke, our chief operating officer for Hardin. This is...
on Resolution R 2019-09-04, and this is regarding the approval of the fourth one-year extension to the street, the operator's agreement for the TCO line streetcar system. As an overview, THS, Tampa Historic Streetcar Contracts with Hillsborough Transit Authority Heart, to operate the TCO line streetcar system. The current extension of the operator's agreement expires September 30, 2019. Purpose of this is to ask and look for your approval to renew this contract for the fourth one-year extension of the agreement. Just for reference, we have already taken this to the Tampa Historic Streetcar Board in this past couple of weeks, and the current agreement in Section 4 of the term says that if this agreement does not formally renew, in other words, if we hadn't brought this to your attention today or is terminated by the party before September 30, the agreement would automatically renew. Our next steps is to ask for your approval to move this to vote today on the agreement.
Do we have a motion on the resolution?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
I would just comment, I don't know that Ruthie mentioned it, but this is identical to the agreement that we've approved over the last several years, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all, any other discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're having a resolution, authorize a chief executive officer to submit the current year 20-year, excuse me, the year 2020 program of projects for the IOC. Chris Cochran.
Well, Chris comes here to give the brief presentation. Many of you have seen the draft list of projects that will be submitted to the Independent Oversight Committee by September 30. By and large, these items have remained unchanged, and did want to state that staff is going to reach out to the community to really take their temperature on the proposed program of projects for submittal within the month of September. Prior to submitting to the Independent Oversight Committee, it's important to us to get some feedback, in particular around the bus service expansion services. So also, at your seat, you do have a comprehensive list of the Offer Transportation Sales Tax Program of Projects, and it is listed by category, so it breaks down the individual quote-unquote buckets, so you can see the various expenditures that we will be submitting. So with that, Mr. Cochran.
Thank you, sir. Chris Cochran, Director of Service Development, presenting to you the presentation that was approved for recommendation by the Finance and Auto Committee, to bring forth to you the final list of the program of projects to bring forth to the IOC by September 30. Some of this you have already seen, so we'll try to get through this pretty quick. Again, our goal here is really looking at resetting our baseline and, excuse me, and establishing a vision moving forward to achieve the overall vision of how we want to move our agency forward with the new referendum funding. The three primary elements that are guided by the SRTAX is, number one, continually, to continue, excuse me, continue to fund some of our partially funded services, resetting the baseline that is really focused on delivering customers high-quality services. This includes reassessing Mission Max routes that we are looking at bringing back, sort of in concurrence with our CLA that we will be looking at implementing, and identifying a number of capital needs that are really structured at, with a customer focus, that involve infrastructure, technology, fleet modernization, maintenance facility needs, and amenities that will really give a better experience for the customer. And then thirdly, is looking at the 30-year plan of establishing a long-term vision, and this really includes a major TDP that we do every five years. We would do one here only a few years out of the 2017 one, ahead of schedule, being that we have to look at it with the new assumptions of our accelerated funding, fixed guideway projects, and premium services. So the total estimated revenues that were, are allocated to HART for both 2019 and 2020, being that we are collecting the money as of January this year, is just over $250 million. And this kind of gives you an idea here of the amount of money within each bucket. We're expecting a little bit of an increase over '19 and '20 that makes up this $250 million. And the 45% of SRTAX here will bring us an estimated $125 million annually, enough three buckets of funding that we've discussed multiple times with you all, is the enhanced bus service, the fixed guideway services, and then the 20% that is really kind of flexible spending. We'll go into a little bit about each of these. So the enhanced bus services are, again, looking at restoring services cut in fiscal year '18, that is, the Mission Max routes that we have talked about. We have already begun to evaluate what kind of routes that we could bring back. These three that we have up there have been identified as some good examples of routes that we could come, we would bring back. We are going to do some really good, we're going to do some community outreach during the week of September 15th, next week, to identify exactly what routes we are going to bring, we are going to bring back. We believe that these are good routes, but we also want to make sure that we are including the public's input on this as well. And then we are looking at really focusing on improving the reliability of weekend and weekday services, of essentially doubling the frequency of a number of routes during the weekdays and weekends, including some new services on the weekends as well. And again, the capital allocation will be going towards the fleet modernization and a number of improvements. So this is a map of the three routes that we've already sort of taken a look at as what would be good examples of bringing back the Route 46 to Palmetto Beach, it's been a big one, we've heard a lot about. South Tampa, Route 4, has a great deal of connectivity for jobs. And then Route 41 has been one farther up north in Tampa that we've had a lot of feedback about as well. And then these weekend services, again, showing you a good spread throughout the, throughout the county of improving weekend services, of bringing these all up to 30-minute service, with the exception of the Route 31, which would actually be brand-new weekend service that they have not had before. And that's, again, something that we've heard a lot about, that people would like to have. And the focus of this, of this first round of improvements for weekday would really be focused on the core, and this would be bringing the majority of routes up to 15-minute frequency.
That's cool. That's really cool.
In total, if you look at this map, really gives you a nice idea that we are, that we are sort of spreading out the improvements throughout the county, trying to do our best to provide some good improvements for people throughout the service area, and doing the best that we can with this first, first round of funding that will be coming in. It will require about 56 full-time employees that we would need by the end of 2020, and 16 buses as well, and we do have a plan in place to make that happen. This is a overlook of the funding, of the breakdown of funding here. Our initial phased operating allocation for these enhanced, service enhancements for the 45% bucket for 2020...